There you go. Okay, so it is being recorded and go for it.
All right, so today is October ninth and this is our regular monthly work session. Yep, we have in attendance myself, council, President Wolf, councilpersons Benidetti, McNamara, Bruger, and Shrimp, and Mayor Hughes. Yeah, so let us. Let us start at the start. We at the last council meeting had two topics brought up that were said to be tabled to this meeting. So why don't we start there? The first was a leaf, leaf bid. Tony, did you get the answers to your questions to your satisfaction? You were the one that had questions.
Well, yeah, I guess at this point, my only concern is getting this, you know, contract official. You know, I don't know how much an email comes into play with. And I think Diane's alluded to this too, is that, you know, the contract says it's coming one day on Wednesday, weather permitting.
Well, I think you're, Tony, I think you're a little late in reading your emails because there was an update that came out. That there's a contract that was, that was rewritten and it indicates.
Well, then that, then that brings me to my next, you know, issues that, you know, to me, we're like right on the line of doing something inappropriate. It's coming back to the guy and saying, hey, your contract's incomplete or, you know, we're not crazy about the terms of the contract. So can you change it? You know, that's, to me, it just doesn't seem right. I know if John was more interested in getting this contract, he'd flip out.
I'm not certain how I understand how negotiating is inappropriate.
He turned in a bid or proposal that says that he's going to come out one day a week. And now he's, now it's changed that he's going to come out one day a week and then it doesn't get done that day. He's going to come back another day and.
Okay.
That's just what I'm saying is that it just doesn't seem appropriate to me.
Well, so the, the difference, so this wasn't a bidding, right? This wasn't a, right, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did not submit this as a bid thing.
We, we sort of, here's, here's how I'll explain. We, we did not have to do anything because it was not over $50,000. Um, we requested bids from people. We did solicit for bids. We did because we don't ever get any. Um, so in my mind, we did. Now adding for inclement weather because of the one day was really the only thing. There was no, we would not have negotiated pricing or anything like that. Um, and, and Tony, I'm not going to agree, disagree, whatever. And that is exactly what crossed my mind when I asked him if he would add that to, you know, the inclement weather. Um, but that was part of why I didn't go any further with him to have him fix anything because. I, I, maybe I'll say this. Um, I feel like these were the two bids that were put to place. People started asking questions because they didn't like, but that's what was submitted. So I, I would agree, you know, I, I would agree with Tony. This is what was submitted, but those exact same things weren't submitted in the other person's either. We just assumed that they were going to come out weekly or come out, you know, whatever day. Like, we don't know that that guy wasn't going to come out every single Tuesday just because it wasn't in there. That's, that's part of a.
Why would he put in a specific date, you know, or time that he's.
It was, and I will tell you why, I, I would, I'm going to tell you why I believe he did it. Um, in the, over the last two years that I have, or three years that I have really been involved in this, that has been, when is he coming? When is he coming? When is he coming? When is he coming? I get asked that from August 17th until, so, you know, ah, he might be coming today. He might be coming tomorrow, maybe. I never knew when he was going to show up. So it gives people a day. So I had told, we had told Brad that, like, you know, that was one of the things that, you know, because he had asked us before he did his bid last year. What do people want? I said, well, that might be a cool thing to do. And I know Eric is on here and he can vouch for that. So he just did it again this year because that was something that residents, not all residents, but that was something residents had actually asked for. Um, just to know when he was coming. And I, I do know that, you know. Having a guarantee supposedly that he's going to be here one day a week because it's in the contract is beneficial. Um, I, there is no guarantee that anybody else is going to come once a week. So I, we know that McKinney's done a great job. There's, there's no, like, I understand some people may not think, it's, it's not a perfect job for anybody to do. Not everybody's always going to be happy, but he's always done a really good job. So I think it's one that, you know, we're always trying to compare, um, getting a new person. Is he going to do as good or this or that? My view on this, and I'm going to shut up, is this is 45, I think, $4,000 or $4,500 less. Um, and it's difficult for me to think as a resident that I would pay $4,500 more when I'm, I don't, I, I've met Brad three times. I, Tony, I get along with McKinney, you know that, I talk to him all the time. So it's hard for me to, you know. It doesn't matter to me which way you go. I'm not, yeah.
I'm in favor of going with the lower bid and, you know, that's.
So Tony, if I can hear, if I can hear what you're saying and, and, because really we just need to get to an outcome here. So what I'm hearing is your concern is you feel like we may have in some way violated or corrupted the, the bidding process by allowing. Whatever his name is, uh, what's the name of the?
Brad Alderman.
Yeah, by allowing this person to refine their proposal to clarify a rain, rain date or inclement weather procedures. Is that, that's your concern?
It is, and I, I agree that it's a gray area maybe or.
Then, then why don't we, we heard that Jesse was coming. We can confirm and get his quick understanding if we did in fact muddy those waters. If he, if he believes we did, then we can see what steps need to be taken to remedy that. And if he doesn't, then I think it sounds to me like we're okay to move forward. Does that sound like a reasonable course of action?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, so I, it's, it's a Brian to move forward on this. Um, if we just review the, in, maybe with or without Jesse's recommendation, maybe we move forward just with the original posted dates. End of story, does that change anybody's minds? Does that make sense? I have both original emails in front of me. We do not look at the new one. Um, like I said, Diane is the one that had asked for that multiple times, um, to have that because she indicated that she would not vote for it unless it was revised. So, um, that was the reason that that was requested. But if we go back to the original, um, two that were date stamped, whatever, and then you guys could do your votes based on that. Jesse said he was going to try to make it. Like I said, he said he had somewhere to be at 8:30. So I'm wondering if he ended up leaving before and I don't, Eric, I don't know if you're on there if he.
No, he hasn't told me. I mean, I exchanged some emails on the late day yesterday, but the, um, just while I'm talking on the end of this, you, you are allowed to, there is leeway with the discussion and negotiation with any of the bidders. Um, you know, and different bits have different rules. I think Jesse will settle this very quickly when we're in the, uh, session on Tuesday.
Yeah, worst case, we can find that out. Um, I can find that out from Jesse and get you guys a response, whether or not we go back to the original or whether or not we allow the adjustment.
Fair enough. I think that all of those are reasonable courses of action.
And that would be, and just as an FYI, that would be the one that I would sign is what I mean by that.
Yeah, right. You would sign the original, not any renegotiated, yada, yada, yada. Yeah, all right. So then the other, uh, discussion topic that came up during the last regular council meeting was a discussion of. If and how a committee should work, right? Uh, it was raised that, uh, at least one council person believes that they're not useful because they only have three people in them. And therefore there's no, uh, I don't know. Tony, go ahead and I, I think you should make your own point, right? I, I don't know that I should lay out.
Well, you can, you can have, if you have only half the members of council in a meeting and you're trying to decide to do something. It's very easy to have the two, two people that want to, you know, move forward in an opposite direction of the other four people. You know, like the mayor had mentioned in the last, uh, meeting, you know, the two members of the street committee were not in favor of going forward with the east shore core project. So if we had recommended not to go forward with it, you know, then we would have had a whole nother discussion, you know? And then things would have changed when the other four get involved.
But, but Tony, I think, I think you are hitting the nail exactly on the head, right? So if, if the streets committee had met, reviewed the stuff and made a recommendation saying that based on these plans. These are our direct concerns and we as a committee recommend we not go forward with this. Maybe the entire outcome would have been different.
You know, Brian, we can argue or discuss this back and forth over and over again. And what it boils down to for me is that at a certain point, there is, it is time for all six of the people to discuss it. The way you described the way it works is that every time you have a discussion, it has to go back to committee. You know, because what I wanted to do at the last, hold on, what I wanted to do at the last council meeting was to have a discussion like we just did. And about the leaf contract. Right, so I don't understand why it has to go back to the committee just to have a discussion amongst the six. And I don't, I don't foresee.
Sure, so this is, this is something we can bring to this group, right? It is my opinion that these kinds of discussions belong in committee or work sessions. Right, not the, not the, not the business meeting, right? The business meeting should be orderly and timely and not wide ranging discussions. They should have an efficiency of business.
But that starts to look like you're not providing information. If you wanted to find out what we're up to and you come just, if you come to a council meeting, which is where you should be able to find out what we're up to. And then we don't all the meaningful discussions or take, take place somewhere else at some other time.
I, well.
I know you continue to disagree with this and our meetings, here, if I could finish, the meetings in the past have taken two hours. Now we're down to, the last meeting was probably 45 minutes, the one before that was 17 minutes, you know? So, you know, talking about getting stuff done and then having meetings that last for 30, 45 minutes, it just doesn't make sense to me.
So, so your opportunity to disseminate information would be in your committee reports. So if, if you feel like your committee report is not the appropriate time to disseminate the information that your committee has worked on, right? So that's where the breakdown is, is that it feels like committees aren't doing their work. So they don't make committee reports. So the only way to get information out to residents is to argue about it in, in a, in a business meeting.
Well, if you want to describe it as arguing, that's great.
Okay, discuss.
But I like, I consider letting the people know what we're doing. And, and the way we do it now, it is so hard to figure out what we're doing, just like with the community building. You know, right now, you know, we're all, you know, things have been posted, it's been updated. But I guarantee you, a vast majority of the residents' village have no idea where we're at. And I know you come back to saying, you can't make people, you know, read the newsletter, you know? But that's, to me, that's unacceptable. A answer for how we go about communicating with the residents.
I would, I would agree that that is unacceptable, but then again, we can't change our residents' minds. We can't force them to pay attention or be involved.
Yeah.
So. Lack of involvement at local. State, federal, actually understanding issues and what's going on to be appalling. But I can't run around knocking on people's doors saying, look, you need to pay attention because this stuff's important. They're not paying attention, not because the information's there, not because we're not putting it out. They can just as easily, no one shows up to council meetings. We have at most two people out of a 2500 person village. Hold on a second, please.
Sorry.
At most two people out of a 2500 person village. So the only way people are finding out what's going on, other than newsletter or whatever, is if they go to the archives, listen or watch our session. Which they can also do with work sessions and committee meetings, which are also recorded and archived. Whether we do it on Monday night meeting or a Saturday meeting, the access is exactly the same. And it doesn't matter if people aren't willing to look into it.
How do people see this meeting right here?
It's posted on to the website.
It's in the exact same way that the Monday night meetings are posted.
Well, so the Monday night meeting gets live streamed, so we don't live stream. So you do, you do at some time that's ever so slightly more convenient than 8:00 AM on a Saturday. They can go to our website and get to this, get to this.
Where's that at on the website?
Uh, okay, so while I am looking for where that is on our website so that I can show you. Um, Tony, so let me, let me, we'll take the example of where we're at with the building, right? We have had, talked about it in untold numbers of meetings, right? Those have been recorded in meeting minutes and live streamed and posted to the internet. We have had, you know, several articles about it in our newsletter. We have had special meetings about it, uh, in public forums, right? Uh, what additional communication are you proposing? Uh, that would, would alleviate this communication problem that you are seeing?
I'm not, I'm not recommending any more communications. What I'm recommending is that we start conducting business in council meetings.
Well, so Tony, this is.
That's falling on deaf ears here. So what I would say is that, isn't the.
Tony, I have a question for you. Is this a, is this a council meeting?
It, yes, it is a council meeting. Well, when, when I see how people are able to see this.
All right.
I haven't found, and that's the other side of it. I, the only thing I could find is YouTube for our council meetings are on YouTube. You know, that, you know, I can find that easily. I haven't been able to find the Zoom meetings.
You go to, you go to.
And the fact that I can't find them would demonstrate, would also show how difficult it is for everybody else to find out this information. Because what I see happening here, guys, is we're, you know. You, if you don't learn from history, you're doomed to repeat it. And that's the direction we're heading with the community building. And regardless of whether people, you know, understand that the information's out there, the fact is, is that they don't think it is. Or they, they're unable or unwilling to, to find out what's going on with the community building. And just like at the last meeting we had to the public, the mayor presents to the residents, this is pretty much so what we've come up with. And this is what it is. It is what it is. This is what we're moving forward with. And there really hasn't been any, you know, involvement with the community. And regardless of whether it's all been out there. Can you guys hear me? Cause you're all froze right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, you know, regardless of what the residents are willing to find out or when they're willing to find out. I would say majority of the people don't know what's going on with the, with the community building. And we're going to end up going down the same road we did with the last bill.
We would have an opportunity to reveal the new plan. Well, that could be another kind of mental refresher for the community to post that. I was impressed with the, with the, um, most recent version we got sent.
And real quick, Tony, you go to the website, you click on resources. You go to, you click on resources, you click on agendas and meetings, sorry, agendas and minutes. We might want to add to that tab, uh, Mayor Hughes, if someone in the office could do it. Put agendas, minutes and recordings of media, something, because I just looked at it and said, oh, I bet it's in the agendas and minutes. But it doesn't mention recordings. But when you go down there, here's the eight, seven, 2021 council work session, 8:00 AM. I click on view details, ooh, work little internet. And I have actually the choice of just watching the video or watching the video and audio or listening to just the audio. It's two clicks.
I think that's a perfect example, uh, Mark, is that you have to go, oh, it's under minutes and agendas. You know, it's like, you know.
Yeah, if I wanted to know what was talked about in a meeting, I would go look at the agenda and the minutes. I mean, that, I, I, I mean. At, at some point, people have to at least. I don't know, be smart enough to figure it out.
Well, I, I know.
Again, so again, Tony.
Hit my head against the dead.
If I may, right, if I may, I'm, I'm going to pose it this way. You, you have, you have identified something you believe is a problem, right? We have had, uh, at least one other council person direct you to where the answer to that problem is. Uh, but you have proffered no suggestion yourself.
Okay, so can we, can we go to maybe get in the count, the community committee to discuss code enforcement? You know, in this kind of on the same lines of what we're talking about, how we conduct our, our meetings. Because, because that's the thing right now that's in limbo is that I've been told that no, community committee is not the place to discuss code enforcement. And it says that in the minute or in the rules of council. And right now I've been waiting on getting a meeting with the code enforcement officer in a community committee meeting to discuss the things that have been going on here. We're about to find out if I can, uh, talk about the, uh, fence appeal that's coming up. You know, this.
Hold on, hold on, Tony, Tony, you, you have, you've, you've shifted the topic, right? Because I don't believe we were done because you, you, you threw up your hands and said, well, I'm not winning this one. So we'll just throw it, but I would like to put a bow on it so that we don't have to ever come back to it again. Right, so, yes, Mayor Hughes.
Um, click on the calendar. I want to give another option.
Oh, okay, Mayor Hughes has another way to get to. So if you are on our website.
Click on the calendar, get to the calendar, go back a month to August, click on the council meeting, click on the meeting that you're interested in. So I just did the Saturday morning work session. Meeting information, the audio and the video is posted right there. So it's actually, there's multiple ways to get to it. Um, again, I, you know, my two cents, and I'm going to keep this short and sweet. I'm in total agreeance with if you want to find it, you can find it. I think a live stream on Facebook is one thing. I think it's easy access if you're actually looking for it. Um, most people are not going to the village Facebook page to watch it. You can see that just by reviewing how many views it's had. Um, so, you know, it, it, it is there. Um, it is, you know, it, it may not be simple for everybody to find. Not everybody plays on the computer like I do, but it is in multiple places. Um, we are continually working on that as much as possible. Tony, you requested at planning and zoning that we add some more sewer maps to it. We have done that. We have added the new, um, plan, the updated version. So anytime you guys have anything that you want added to the website or you have questions finding something on the website or anything like that. Barb has been overly amazing trying to get this, this website and everything on there. So Tony, after we left planning and zoning, the first thing that Barb did the next morning, she goes through, she listens to the meetings. And then she gets this information from the meeting. She doesn't watch every single meeting because she doesn't have to do minutes. But, um, just as an FYI, they do try to keep up with everything going on and she was able to get that stuff on to the website. So this website, the whole, you know, all I'm going to say is you guys were able to get this website moving forward. And this website is pretty user friendly once you really, you know, if you just go in there and spend a minute, two minutes, five minutes, it can be really, a really good tool. But it's only a good tool. I don't know how many times Brian has said this and, you know, I didn't always love it when Brian said this either. Um, but if you want the information, it's there, you have to go looking for it. It doesn't matter, you know? We've talked about the community building for four years. We have gotten recommendations from so many, and now I'm going off topic, but we've gotten the recommendations from so many council people. The residents from, we, it didn't fall on deaf ears. We took all of your guys' suggestions, we went back to them. So this is not a design that the mayor put together and I just said, this is what we're doing. This is based on, I don't want to say hundreds of hours over the last four years, but this came from the 2999 building, all the way up to the point that we're at. Though, there is only one thing that I am aware of that we're not getting on this building design. And it's, it's a pricing issue. It's a, you know, whatever, we, I'm not getting into that. But I, I believe we've done a great job getting, listening to the residents, listening, listening to the residents that have been involved and listening to council. And trying to work with admin and getting this to the best design possible. So I know not everybody agrees with that. Um, but you know, to say that basically I've said this is what we're going with, that's based on me being, and I can't tell you how many hours of meetings about what, with Diane. Um, because she did a great job, you know, having those meetings. I was at a lot of those meetings, listening to what residents wanted. So I just, you know, I, I, I don't want that to fall on deaf ears. And again, you can see the new design, um, as, you know. McNamara stated, you know, this is a lot of the stuff that, you know, he was happy with. So it, it is, that's all, I know we want to move on to code enforcement. Um, I'm not trying to rush everybody, but I'm the one that tries to keep it moving forward and I'm going backwards. I just wanted to say, play on the website, audio videos there. That was my full circle to answer a couple of those things. So let's go to the next or finish up.
So, so yeah, so thank you for, for pointing out yet another way that one can find, uh, access to the video and audio of all of our meetings, right? Uh, what I wanted to do to wrap a bow around this section of this conversation is note that we have. Uh, several ways for people to get information about what we are doing, right? Uh, whether they are good enough, you know, could they always be better? I, I think we as human beings would be remiss to say that things couldn't be better. But what we need is ideas for how they are better. And just saying that they're not good enough is not saying how they can be better. So what I'd like to do is suggest that this, that we, we come to agreement that this is what we have and come back to it when somebody has a how it can be better. Does that sound fair, Tony?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so now you're, you want to talk about code enforcement and the community committee.
And, you know, like you had pointed out, we all, uh, approve the rules of council.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that was intentionally put in there so that council could have some input. In code enforcement. You know, we've recently, uh, you know. You know, but there's been, well, you saw the email that came out from the resident with the tree next to his house. You know, I don't think that was handled correctly in the first place with the letter to, uh, the resident with the tree. Uh, and now we have an offense appeal that's coming up. And I don't know whether anyone has thought about this, but why did, you know, for both of those people to have to get attorneys. It's an indication that this is going south. And, you know, I'd like to hear exactly where we're at. Because I have spoke with, uh, the appellant in this and they're not telling me everything because they're being like closed fisted about it. But this is, uh, another example of code enforcement not really doing their job correctly. And I believe that it is the place of council to discuss these things.
It, it absolutely is. I, I 100% agree that council has the opportunity to advise on how codes, to make recommendations to the administration on how codes should be interpreted, right? Uh, and looking at our rules of council, I can see under the description of the purview of the community committee. The community committee shall make recommendations to council for the care and maintenance of the village grounds and facilities. Uh, to work with code enforcement, especially to review and clarify code ordinances. Uh, this is accomplished with the support from the village administration and code enforcement. So, uh, it sounds to me from our rules of council that that is a community committee discussion. Now, if we're saying, so this goes back to your, your argument that things can't get done in committee because there's only three council people there. I, I don't see how that's the case, but if we want to hash it out here, uh, we certainly can. Do you have a specific code that you are referring to that we can discuss how it should be interpreted?
So, first off, I like to say I'm not opposed to things being discussed in the committee. I've just said that at a certain point, it needs to go on to the full group.
Well, always.
In this, okay, in this, you know, well, I don't know that it's appropriate to start talking about the appeal case.
Correct.
It is not, you know? Yeah, so, you know, right, right now, I guess, my big issue with John is that, you know, I wish every, you know, I know people don't like getting involved in Facebook. But if you were to look at Brittany Lander's post where she took a screenshot of a letter that the code enforcement officer sent out to her. You know, that letter said. That, uh, you know, your tree is dead, you need to remove the tree. You need to contact a professional tree removal service and then you need to let me know when this is all done. Now, in the case of the tree, it is not the, the, it is not the villages, it doesn't, the village doesn't have the authority to tell that person. They have to cut a tree down. It's not even completely dead, you know, it's half dead. You know, so in this particular case, I believe that the, the code enforcement officer should have never sent that letter out to her. And get in the middle of a civil suit is what, is what they're, what they've done or he's done. You know, so I don't know if anybody has any understanding about when, when the village could tell someone to cut a tree down. So, but I think in this particular case, they kind of jumped the gun. Eric, you had something you were about to say?
Yes, sir. Um, a lot of what you're stating is, is correct. All right, so what you're, what you're stating from the factual standpoint is that. Yes, sir. Um, a lot of what you're stating is, is correct. All right. So what you're, what you're stating from the factual standpoint is that. We do have some authority in certain situations to handle hazard trees. Now, those situations, and I met with the uh, with Mr. Cools of yesterday, uh, to kind of go over the options. But the village has to have a situation where we have public easement, where we've got a public right of way. We've got something where a tree will. Impact, like it'll kill people, injure people, right? Our code, unlike other village codes, is silent on situations where we have a dead tree. Now, we could refer, since the tree is not all the way dead, it hasn't been assessed by an expert yet. Um, I mean, my view from experience is that you do have a limb that's, that's dead, dead, right? So, but is it, is it imminently going to fall? I can't answer that question, right? I, it has to be inspected by a, by a certified arborist, and we have to get an expert opinion, or the homeowner in this case would. We can't. Our authority ends pretty much with right of way at the moment. Now, if the tree is super dead, we're worried about safety, imminent danger to the public. We can handle it under perhaps some sections of maintenance nuisance code and so forth, if it came to that, right? If we really felt there was an imminent fear of death to somebody, I think it would be our obligation to do so. That said, you know, I, I, I want to point out in this whole scenario, whenever there's complaints here about code enforcement. It has to do, in the last couple instances, it has to do with our code enforcement officer trying to reach out to neighbors. And, and I can't fault him for this because I myself, in my, in my twenty plus years of experience, have done this, where we try to, we try to mitigate. You know, an unhappy neighbor um, with a potential problem by trying to, you know, send a friendly letter. In the sense that we're not citing you, you know, we are trying to give you inform, we, we call it in, in the business, an informational letter of some kind. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's an administration decision, you know? You know, if people don't like that, I get it because it's a, it's a gray area, but we're not specifically citing them under the code, and we're not specifically hauling them into mayor's court. So it, it's, it's just something the village can send, and it's more of a, it's more of an administrative policy issue. But you know, I'm sure the mayor will take. You know, if people want us to just stick to, you know, as a council as a whole, if they want to advise the mayor, you want us to stick to strictly black and white. Letters that just, you know, come out and hammer people instead of trying to, you know, mitigate certain circumstances, by all means, make that recommendation to the mayor on a motion vote.
I, I don't like that, but that's neither here nor there.
So can I, if I may ask a clarifying question, right? Is there a reason why the friendly letter of, hey, this is perceived as a problem? Please remedy it. Is there a legal reason why that cannot include the potential code that is potentially in violation?
Correct. It, it, it can, and say, look, you could be cited, and I would say from my own professional experience, you probably should put it in there. You know, something we can, we can advise, John. I, I, I think that's a valid point. In this situation, as Tony stated, we don't have a direct authority here, so we don't have a code to cite directly. It's a very odd gray scene, so we don't have.
For the tree, for the tree, I think that's possible. I was looking at the code right now. And I haven't gone out and looked at this tree, but it looked like in the code, there was, there is. Some language about removing uh, the mayor, village administration is hereby authorized to remove trees. Within the corporate village, stru, of, of the village streets that have been determined to be dangerous to the public.
So that's hazard code for right of way.
Uh, well, but if it's within the limits of the village streets, so that might be right of way, is that what you're saying? Is that the limits of the village streets is right of way?
Correct.
Well, and isn't it, isn't it, is it not a right of way on that? Because it's, it's abutting one of the walking paths.
Ye- yes, sir. It, it, we would, we would interpret that to be anything where we had a public easement for access of the public. And or where the tree would fall, it, it was in a fall zone, right? It doesn't have to be right within the boundaries of those areas.
Right. So, but this particular tree is on a property that is adjacent to one of the walking paths.
No, no, it is, it is technically between two neighbor, well, three neighbors.
Then I was imagining it somewhere where it wasn't, and I will stop making that argument. Uh, so, oh, hold on, I would like to finish my thought. Uh, so it sounds to me like, but a lot of these. Uh, issues could be clarified if council made a recommendation to the mayor that any of these friendlier letters. Include a notation of what code is or isn't being cited. Uh, and, and when that can't be done, right, to, to maybe eschew the sending of such a letter, right? So if we can't cite a code regarding this tree saying, this is where, where there's a violation, maybe we should hold back.
That sounds fair to me. I just, I just don't like the idea of the first interaction someone gets with the village being some, you know. Some code violation or some fine. I mean, I think as long as we're doing this. These informational letters in a diplomatic and friendly and professional courteous manner, I don't see a huge issue with them.
Um, David, just as an FYI, that was one of the very first things that, oh, sorry. Um, that we always talk about, and Eric and myself and everybody else, um, that's in admin, there is no interest in going and. Trying to put the hammer down on anybody. I think if anybody knows me when it comes to that kind of stuff, it's. Um, get your grass cut, do this, do that, you know, get the letters out, trying to get, you know, it's, and I'm not, I don't want to go into the weeds on, you know, the. The Farview Four. Um, but it's trying to get some of those residents to work with us. And just as an FYI, and I, and I will say this, and maybe I'm going too far, one of the residents has reached out and is working with us on that. So, um, and, and one, you know, one has come in and expressed their concern. So the letters do. What they are supposed to do when we are sending out what I'm going to call friendly letter. Yes, maybe there's a way that we could put on there. You know, please note, this is not a violation. This is, you know, um, this is a friendly reminder. This is something, you know, you may not have noticed type thing. So, you know, mo- like, go ahead, Tony, or give me one second. So I have no issues whatsoever, um, when it comes to things like this, because again, you don't know what's going on in people's lives. You don't know, you know, the last thing I would want is somebody to put a, you know, something on my door for something that, you know, you could have just been nice about it. So I, I, I am fully aware, and I do fully believe that that's what we should be doing. I don't think that we should be putting fines. Now, if it's a person that's not cut their grass four times, and you know, it, then that's a different story. But if they're not cutting their grass four times because of a reason, and we know what the reason is, and we can help them. I'd be more than happy to try to figure out a way to help them. So, Tony, go ahead, but I just, I wanted you to know that, David. I, there is no part in my thing that says, let's hammer somebody.
I, I didn't assume there was. I'm just speaking of.
Oh, no, absolutely. I just kind of wanted to let you know the way that, the way that we've been, we just, we tried to talk about them. Some of the, some of the violations and some of the potential violations or something that may be a concern. Um, or again, what do we do because we have multiple people complaining about this? How can we make multiple residents happy? And sometimes it is what it is. I mean, you know, just because somebody doesn't like something, doesn't mean it's wrong.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, as public servants, we should try to be, you know, friendly faces as representatives. And yeah, I, I think that, you know, sending the letters before fines is a.
Absolutely.
Excellent part in that process.
Right. But again, nobody wants to receive one.
Yeah, yeah.
In a, in an odd turn of events, Tony has actually been waiting patiently here, so I think it's time to let him, let him have, have, have that. What he was trying to say.
Maybe steps.
Uh, yeah, no, I, and, and that's why I called out and let you know how proud we are, you know, you for.
Well, I, I'm completely in favor of sending out friendly letters to people that have violated a code. Now, sending out a letter to someone who hasn't violated any codes, that's a problem for me. And friendly or not, and that's what happened with, with the tree being cut down. Is that there are no bot code violations, and it wasn't a friendly letter. And this is my other issue with John, is that he responded back in an email to everyone that there's no, there's no. Um, you know, uh, penalties for not cutting the tree down. And he said, the only thing I did was tell her that her tree was dead. Well, that's not accurate, because he told her, your tree's dead, you need to cut it down, you need to do it with a professional. And you need to report back to me when this is done. So, to, to describe that letter as a friendly, uh, you know, reminder that your tree's dead is not accurate at all. It was a request from the code enforcement officer, whether there's a citation associated with it or not. The code enforcement officer asked her to remove the whole tree and report back to me. You know, so Eric, hold on. And then the other thing that the mayor just said is that, you know, we're going to send out letters for potential code violations. You know, we shouldn't be sending out letters to anyone unless there's a code violated. And I would go back to, I would like to ask the code and for, and Eric, you too. If someone were to continue to drop leaf clippings in the green, in the reserves. What code would they be, be, would they be breaking? If they continue to do that, and we said, you know, we kept sending them friendly letters, and they continue to do it. So at some point, you're going to take them to, to mayor's court. This is my question for next, next meeting. What code, what, what's that?
I have the answer now, if you're ready.
All right.
So, we, we, so we're, we're kind of jumping all over the place a little bit, but I'm going to swing it around here. So with that instance, since that is our property, we would cite them, we would have an officer cite them. Under trespass and debris and stuff. That's not a zoning violation, that's a criminal violation, okay? So that's how we would handle that one.
How can you trespass in public property?
Because we would tell them that they cannot dump litter on the thing. We would have warned them, right? We'd have caught them and warned them and said, don't do it again, and if we catch them again, they're going to get a citation, and they would be cited in the mayor's court, but it's under the criminal code, not under the. Not under the zoning code. We don't cite people under zoning code for criminal violations. That's a criminal violation, okay? It's a different area.
So we're going to put up no trespassing signs because here's.
No, that's not what, that's just, I'm just telling you what the site is. You asked me a question, that's what the site is. If we have to enforce people dumping, illegal dumping in the green space, which is what that is, it's a combination of things, okay? And it's all handled by the police. I'm sure the chief could further detail that, and you're welcome to ask him that question. But it's not, that's not a zoning violation because it's our ground. We're not violating ourselves, right? If this was a private owner that was dumping on their own ground.
But how can, how can you, see Eric, this is what really blows me away. You are so great at, at convoluted the laws to say that, okay, we're going to say.
It's not a law, dude. I'm not convoluted anything. You can talk to, you can talk to A, the law director, and B, the chief, and trust me, there've been, I've been doing this a long time, and this is how this is handled. If we've got everything from, if you can have a pet that's dumping, you know, and the people aren't picking up after in the public area, that's a criminal site. That's not a, that's not a zoning site, okay?
So, so if I may, maybe, maybe if we, if I try to explain it, or, or we paraphrase what you've said for, for clarity, right? So in, in the scenario that you have posed, someone is dumping leaves or glass, grass clipping on village property. Right? We note it once, and we tell them, this, this activity is trespassing upon our property. Right? That's their trespass notice.
You can't, you.
Of course you can, of course we can, of course you can.
You can just all of a sudden say that you're not allowed to walk on, on public.
No, we're not saying you're not allowed to walk on public property. We're saying you, you aren't allowed to dump grass clippings or leave litter on our property.
You are trespassing when you do.
Absolutely do that.
That's when you're trespassing.
I, I must not understand what trespassing means, because to me.
Correct. I, I would talk to the chief and to the legal counsel.
Yes, I, yes, you.
I'm not the one, the, we're not the ones that are going to write that, that citation. That is a, that's a police matter, and the chief directs that.
Then why is the enforcement officer sending out notifications if it's a criminal issue?
We, we send out note, when we put things like in the newsletter, where we notify people of what they can and can't do in the reserves. That is, again, that's an informational item, and as strictly speaking, our letter that went out told them they could be liable for criminal actions if they continue that behavior. So that's how that was handled, right? Now, getting back to the item for, let's circle back around to the question or the concern with the code enforcement officer. So a couple of things on that. One, there's always room, since we're all human and we're trying to do the right thing, there's always room for improvement with how we. A- as David and Brian and everyone else has stated, there's always improvement to how we perceive with our residents. And we're always open to qualifying statements. When we say things, when, when the mayor, I, or anyone says things that are, you know. Pre-code or, or pre-code violations or before code, well, generally speaking, what that means is we see a code being violated. We're not, you know, if we think there's something that's going to happen, if we think, if we hear that residents are doing something that they shouldn't be, i.e. the reserves are a good example. We may send out a large informational letter to everyone, treat it all equally, you know, that's one way of handling it. You know, should John, should have done, John done something a little different in this case? Well, I'm, I'm open for that, and I think the mayor is too. You know, there's nothing to be overly critical with him. He's trying, he was trying to, you know, sometimes thread the needle can be difficult in these situations. When you've got an unhappy neighbor and a potential problem from one neighbor, maybe it's not a real problem. And maybe the letter could be worded differently. Okay, note taken, and you know, we can, we can make an improvement. So I think that's it.
All right. So I would like to, I don't know if I am advocating for this position, but throw out a different way of handling this. Right? Because I'm, I'm always about interesting ideas. But I would suggest that we do away with friendly letters, because they will always be misconstrued. Right? Because any letter from the government saying that you're not doing the right thing sounds and feels like a threat. Right? But I would suggest that on any first offense, we could allow for an extended period for compliance. Right? So, right, it would require that the letter have a code cited. Right? This is what you, this is what has been observed as a violation, but we understand that this is apparently a surprise to you. And we're going to give you this extended time to remedy. Because we understand and because we are neighborly, and if that doesn't work, come talk to us and we'll figure something out. But on, on a first notification, but it would be a notification of violation. That there's an extended period for com- compliance. And as far as the village getting involved with neighbors complaining about other neighbors. I don't think we should ever get involved in that, because that's only ever going to bite you in the ass.
I would, I would strongly agree with that. If there's not a basis in our code, I would absolutely agree with, um, Council President Wolf's statement there.
Just want to qualify a couple of things, sir. Uh, one is that obviously a couple of points in our code for specific violations. We are dictated as to the notice period and to how much time they have to rectify. So just to qualifying there. Any cases where we have nuisance, emergency hazard situation, we have to act immediately. We, we don't, we may not have extended time. There are only those two items.
Sure, and, and we can, you know, for nuisance hazard, absolutely. And for things with the specified periods, we can revisit and amend legislation, right? I, I don't think, I think that it is an idea of a directional shift in how we are directing these things to be done. And I think it's perfectly reasonable to review and amend legislation based on that. Like, I know for sure our gla- our grass clipping ordinance does not have a, an extended period of time on first notification. I think first notification's like four days.
Correct, because otherwise they have two feet of grass.
Exactly. And, and maybe grass, grass cutting is one that we don't want to give more than two days, because we don't want two feet of grass. But again, we can look at these on a case by case basis as well, but I don't think, I am of the opinion that friendly letters only piss people off.
Um, I will say one thing to that, Brian, if I heard correctly, I don't. I don't agree with any sort of changing of timeframes, if there's a timeframe listed in the code. That should just be it, and that prevents any sort of appearance. Or opportunity for someone to say, wow, Jess is a great guy, let's give him an extra week. And then Sue doesn't get the extra week, or Sue only gets six days instead of seven, and then why is people paying? If it says you have to remedy, if it says in the code, this needs to be remedied within four days, you have four days to remedy it. That's it. Where, and now you want to appeal, and you want to go to mayor's court and say, look, this is why I couldn't do it, and mayor's court want to say. Okay, that, that, you know, hey, that, we're, we're not monsters. We're not going to actually find you anything for this, but we understand, things happen, whatever, whatever. That's where that leniency or leeway should go. But us just telling people like, well, technically you're supposed to have it done in four days, but go ahead and take the week. And because then you're setting up arbitrary times that could end up being different for different people. And why did, why did Jeff get a week and I only got six days and?
I, I get that entirely, and I think that, uh, I think that falls in line with what Eric was saying, is that some of our code have very specific. Uh, timelines, and on those, we probably couldn't uh, allow extra time for compliance. And that's, I think that's fair, and if there are ones that we feel that in this process, we determine that that minimal timeline is. Doesn't match the friendly attitude that we as a village would prefer, then we can look at amending it.
I'm, I completely agree with you there, Brian, and I think the most important thing is, like you had mentioned, is getting the code number on these letters. Because I think you'll find, like you may have figured out with, with the dead tree, that if you can't find a code, then maybe you shouldn't be sending a letter out to them. You know, so I would, I completely agree with what you had said about, uh, you know, well, I'm not opposed to friendly letters. I guess if the letter's friendly, and that's where. Well, I'm not opposed to friendly letters. I guess if the letter is friendly and that's where, you know. But I think, you know, that doing it like you would describe would be the best way is that here's, and it also gets things done quicker. It's like, here's a violation, you know, this is the amount of time you have to fix it. If you don't, then. We move on to the next step.
I think, I think the problem with friendly letters, and I I don't know how many different ways I can say it, is. I am not aware of any, I and I, unless the letter comes in. And it starts, hey, Brian, it was so great to see you last week. And you know, we had, you know. It's not a friendly letter, right? It's, it is, it is business and it should probably be handled as business, right? I mean, that's just what it is. The business of the village is. Letting people know what the codes are and enforcing them as such.
I don't think anyone's arguing with you, Brian.
I know, I just love the sound of my own voice.
I I just wanted to hi, I'm I'm really here. Uh, the good discussion and I think it's come to a good conclusion. My question is, is. So the uh, the neighbor with the the tree phobia. Uh, he is, you know, sent an email to all of us along with a picture. And my question is, is that as a council person, I I feel like someone emailed me and I should respond. And so. Um, I am just curious as to then. Uh, the response to this person, um, I know that uh. Councilman Benedetti went ahead and and gave his own opinion, but. Uh, i- is it just, uh, you know, it's as a council person, do I just give my own opinion or should? I don't want to stir the pot either. Uh, and make things worse. So, uh, what, what is the? But but I I don't see on this email where where anyone. In this email has has replied, uh, all on this email to this person. I don't know how it's it's being handled or been handled.
I can update you.
If he, if he approached me, well, I I I need to know, uh. Either I can respond to him directly or there's someone from the, or the village is telling you what the response is. And I haven't gotten a response from the administration. So if this guy approached me, I I felt stupid, like I haven't been doing my job. So. What what is the, what's the advice on that?
So, so here's where we're at from an administration standpoint. And then, you know, council can obviously make their own decision. Individual members are always welcome to meet and talk to their residents direct. But here's what the administration's position was. Met with the gentleman yesterday, uh, in the afternoon. We had a very nice discussion, went over his options, explained to him, you know, where our authority was and ended, same saying I explained this morning to everyone here. Um, you know, gave him some advice, you know, as to, you know, how he may want to approach it and a couple of things. And I told him if you want to, he had some good suggestions on. Adding some code regarding, you know, nuisance or hazard trees, which other municipalities do have and we do not, that are on private property. And I said, you're welcome to email the rest of your council members any suggestions like that, you know, and let them know where you're at with your concerns. So. You may be hearing from him. And again, you're welcome. We have reached out to him and and met with him and you are welcome as well to individually email him.
Go ahead, David.
I I said I would be happy to hear from the gentleman. I. As as I very frequently say, I I want more people to talk to us more often before things become issues, you know? It it all goes back to what um, Councilman Bruegger says about. The uh, largely woeful attention paid to. Anything smaller than federal or international politics. Or, you know, so affairs. So I'd I'd love to hear from more people. So I hope he does. I hope he does reach out to us.
Did I say anything in my reply that was out of line?
Is there, is there a recommendation on? Uh, from you then Eric, that there could, that we should uh, pursue? Tree hazards on private property?
Missed the question. I apologize for handling something. Can you repeat that, please?
Uh, yeah, is there a recommendation from you, uh, that? We should, the council should be or the code enforcement, whoever should be uh, pursuing code for hazardous trees on private property?
I think it, I think what would be best is that you look at the related codes. I can put together something for legislative committee. It's right up the alley for review. Uh, and I think from comparison standpoint, and then you can get the legal director's opinion on it. Uh, there are many, there are several, I should say, schools of thought on dealing with. Hazard trees, negligence, things of that nature that are on private property, right? So it's, it's, it's one of those things, I think you, it's. It can get, it can get a little hairy. Um, so it has to be done correctly. And and there's nothing wrong with incorporating it, especially if. I would say Minerva has a very large tree population. Uh, especially in the old section. And I I I think there may be, there may be a way to handle it here. Uh, as compared if you had a, you know, a suburb that was more. Farmland development. Here you're very heavy, so there may be good reason to have one. But I would say that something that should be taken up in committee first.
Okay, well, I I would agree that we, especially in the old area, uh, we we do have. A lot of opportunities. I'm surprised it hasn't come up more frequently. But I would assume most people don't move here if they're afraid of trees falling. That's pretty, you know, I mean, that's going to happen. So, uh, so yes, um. I don't like hairy code either, but we should probably, based on the number of trees we have and the age of the trees. Et cetera, we probably should have something.
I'll be happy to bring something forward this month.
Okay, so this was. A discussion around code enforcement and how it would get done. Now, we, should we? Um, I think that I heard general agreement around. Uh, a recommendation to not send friendly letters, but I don't know that for sure that was an agreement. And does council feel like that is a? Resolution that should be, should be put forward? Or is it just an informal recommendation that we are making to the? Administration in this session? How, how do we as a body want to proceed with this?
Well, we could have a conversation in a committee meeting about code enforcement with the code enforcement officer.
Well, there, there is, there is that, right? And. Uh, that falls under the purview of the community committee, Dave. Uh, David, do you want to take that up?
Yeah, so um, I spoke or I have an email pre-going. Um, talking about a community committee meeting. That, let me find that, um, would like to have, um. Perhaps Tuesday, the nineteenth at six P M. Um, that's the one that I was originally trying to get. The, I guess we'll call them the Farview Four involved with, you know, everywhere we can sit down with. As many of them as can attend and. Our, you know, village administration people to go over, you know, the full range of options. Um. Uh, Councilperson Curl also included the idea of having. Um, our code enforcement officer there as well. So if he could make it, that would be. An ideal time. I think we could discuss. Um, a fair bit of coding. Not to say issues, but um. Events that have arisen. Would that be? What does that sound fair to everybody? A community committee meeting on the nineteenth at six P M.
I can, I I'd be more than happy to ask him if he's available.
If you would, ma'am, that'd be fantastic. We could do that. We could, if if the Farview individuals. Um, are able to show up. Um, maybe welcome to attend because I know that's the, one of the major things going on right now with. Code enforcement in the village, but that's, that's something that's been on my radar as well. And. That was the date that I came up with and no one argued. So I. I figure that would be a good time to go over. Uh, code stuff. I'd be more than happy to.
Can we get an update? Can we get an update on what's going on with the Farview Four? Her father, not the Farview Four, but.
Um, I gave a real quick. I gave a really quick update. Um. One of the owners has reached out and we are working with them. It seems as if that one's not going to be an issue. They are, I'm not going to speak for them. So. You know, I will just say that, um, they're, there's no, and like, I don't believe there is an issue whatsoever. They're going to do what they need to do. Um, so the other two, um, I personally have not heard from. I cannot speak to that. The, I I would have to ask John. Um, and then of course, you know where Segovia stands. Um, I stand where we stand. I think it needs to be done. I think they need to be doing theirs. I think we have been more than willing to work with them. We are more than willing to work with them, but um. Everybody else cuts to the street and that's where we are. So, um, that's my answer. And if they don't, if, you know, like, we won't do friendly letters as Brian and some of the others have. Said at this point, it will be, this is what it is and this is the violation. This is the, um, so that's, that's where we are. Um, that some have not reached out. I think. You know, we're at the end of grass cutting season, but. It's not going to end there. I mean, I, it, we've got to get it resolved. I'm not going to do this all next year and, um.
We're working through it. We'll get in touch with the other two owners and and we'll have a discussion. I I I, David, if I may, I. That meeting on the nineteenth, if you want to make it a Farview Four meeting, it's going to be very different from a code enforcement meeting. So I would, you know, depends on where you want to focus that attention.
Sorry, go ahead.
I said, I guess that makes sense. Um.
If I could add, David, only the other part to that is like if we tried to separate it, you know, a little bit, like have the Farview people come in at six thirty and talk to code enforcement at six. That's the only way I would do it. But just keep in mind that we have a meeting at seven. So the residents may feel rushed if they don't get to be heard. Um, just if we do it at six o'clock, there's another meeting at seven, which is a great thing normally. But that may bite us in the butt on this one if residents are, you know, not getting answers or whatever in a very short amount of time. So. Again, if we had the code enforcement, it's, you know, or, you know, a code enforcement discussion. Um, between six and six thirty and then, uh, it's it's your meeting, it's up to you. I I have no, no issue asking whatever questions or who. Who can attend, who can't attend, but just remember we have a seven o'clock that night too.
Yeah, that idea, I I really do enjoy that idea. Um. I mean, I I hate to say, but the attendance of these things is so abysmal anyway. I think we'll, I think we'll be able to make both work over the half hour periods that you just have offered.
Yeah, because we can just have, I mean, we, if, you know, the code enforcement discussion could be from six to six thirty. So. Whether, you know, you guys, if you have specific, if he can't attend and you guys get specific questions from him. Um, and then I could have Eric attend or whatever. We'll figure out exactly what his schedule is and all that kind of stuff and talk to Eric and. Maybe we just have both, one, whatever. We'll figure that out. But. Um, we could do that from six to six thirty and then invite the residents from six thirty to seven. Because the other part is. That's just going to go in a circle if you have everybody there.
Okay, well, that's fantastic. Thank you so much for the suggestion, ma'am.
And I would say, you know, yes, normally attendance is. Is poor, but if the whole point of the meeting is like, hey. You four people come and talk about your yard, we're going to get those four people and they're going to have things to say.
And I welcome them to do so. That's why I wanted to hold a meeting in the first place. It's discussed at the last council meeting. I said I would. Try to coordinate with um, the people to do so.
I'm just saying, you may have to have a couple of meetings, David. So because it's, that that'll be a long meeting, one way or the other. And I. Just see it going for, you know, a thirty minute plus discussion on the fences and the. And the right away and all that kind of stuff. And then, you know, code enforcement discussion could easily go an hour itself.
Well, I guess we can at least get started. We can at least get those topics started.
Okay.
On the, then we can go from there depending on who all shows up and how much interest there is. Does that sound like a fair beginning?
Sure.
Yeah, I would agree with Eric considering we've already spent probably close to thirty minutes with one resident at, um. Two council meetings and I'd probably say we're closer to forty minutes. In two meetings with one resident, let alone the other three.
We can, we can do it however you want to structure it. I mean, you've got an hour, so um, we'll see how it goes.
I think.
All right, I I think it's. Go ahead, go ahead, Diane. I'm sorry.
Well, I I was just, as I recall from, from how this, this idea of the meeting, community meeting came up. Is that there Eric and the mayor and et cetera, letters and code enforcement. There's already been a lot of discussion around this. And I, I thought this discussion was. Around the idea of the, the people feel the fences are a nuisance. And so perhaps. Just focusing on, uh, you know. How do you feel about the fences and letting them express that they? Whether or not all four of them feel the fences should be taken down in their opinion. You know, and just focusing on that aspect. I thought that's where we were at is. Is the feeling that, uh, perhaps the fence fencing could or should come down, perhaps it is a nuisance. And that you were going to get the feedback from the four people. That's where I thought. I thought it was a more focused discussion.
Right, I I agree with Diane on that.
Yeah, but just because that's what we think that the conversation should be doesn't necessarily, you're still going to talk about, I I'm sure it'll probably still go in other ways. But yeah. However, we want to work it. Uh, David, it's your meeting. Um, I will ask and see what we can do as far as who can attend, who's not going to attend. Um, maybe who whoever's on your committee, if they could confirm. If they are going to be able to attend, we just had a streets meeting the other night and unfortunately we weren't able to move forward. It was total accident and I do agree with that. That the members, it it, we, we showed up and we weren't able to actually conduct the meeting. So. Make sure that everybody um, is seeing what time it is. Make sure everybody knows when and where and all that good stuff. And just make sure that you're. Um, at least your committee is able to attend. And if others are able to attend, the more the better.
Self, it's myself, Councilman Benedetti and um, Councilman Curl.
Okay.
Uh, so I know I can, um, Councilman Benedetti, do you have any issues at this point? With Tuesday, the nineteenth, it says.
That's good. Stay with me.
Okay.
Just maybe send a reminder to Joe and then again, we have another one at seven. So it's, I mean, it's a good date to do it because people should already be planning on it. So.
Yeah, that's why, that's.
Yeah.
I promise I chose this to make it as easy as possible for people.
I promise to pay attention to exactly what time the meeting is this time. Like, I screwed up at the street meeting.
Better late than never. Okay, um, Brian, I'm going to take over and I know I'm going to get yelled at for saying this, but it is nine fifteen. Um, I know we haven't even started the agenda yet. So I think if we could pause and go to the agenda. Get through that to make Mondays and then see what time we're at. And then. Everybody can make their decision if people want to stay past ten or if we're done at ten, that's going to be up to them. I have a football game I got to go to. So, um, I just, if you guys have questions, I want to be able to answer them. Again, you guys can continue. Um, and I'll stay as long as I possibly can, but.
You know, that's exactly where I was at.
Perfect.
So, uh, moving on to the Monday agenda. Hold on a second here. I clicked away from it, so I gotta.
I don't have it up in front of me either, so.
All right, so. Um, why don't we start with you, Mayor? Why don't you, if you want to give us whatever heads up. As far as a report for your stuff, that's probably the the best place to start.
Oh, I honestly, um, I fly by the seat of my pants. I have absolutely nothing. That I could tell you that is pressing right now. Um, I'm sure I'll say something about, uh, I don't know. I, at this point, I I have nothing pressing. Everything's moving along. That's it.
Everything is, is what it was, what last, when when last we met is what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm hearing. And if not, you'll get an email.
Okay, well then, uh, let's see here. Uh, you know, and at this point, we're really just looking for a heads up so that nobody is surprised. No, uh. No, no bombshells come Monday. Uh, so Tony, was there any update or heads up you want to give us for planning and zoning?
Uh, well. The only. We talked about shelters. Uh, that, you know, the shelter. And I guess what I, I think what we need to do as a council is to start, uh. You know, talking about all the stuff that the planning zoning commission is proposing and give them some ideas about. What we want to uh, move forward with. You know, because right now we've got a proposal for forty-five, fifty thousand dollars for a pavilion. Over by the basketball court or by the playground equipment. You know, and a lot of time and energy spent in that. And, you know, my take on it is that I'm not. Real interested in spending that kind of money on a pavilion at that location. You know, so from a planning and zone, I mean, I guess that's what I'd like to report is that we need to start maybe talking about, uh. How willing or or how much we want to move forward with these projects. Like the amphitheaters gotten some, you know, people objecting to that. And you know, how much we want to, you know, spend on that.
Okay, so, so here is. Okay, so, uh, what I heard was you're looking for a. Uh, the temperature of the room on the amphitheater and the. uh, the temperature of the room on the amphitheater and the temperature of the room on uh
Shelter.
A shelter. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, so the amphitheater is not ready for any recommendation or submittal to council yet. It's, it's still in P and Z. We still have work to do on it before anything gets presented. It has not been voted on yet, yet, P and Z, I just want to point that out.
Well, it's not been voted on, but we.
Right, well, so, oh, go ahead, Diane.
I'm sorry. It was in the newsletter, right? Just the, just the, the uh, the hint of it, that that was out there in planning and zoning. And that, of course, I was so delighted that somebody read the newsletter, and so that provoked a uh Facebook discussion that, that went as it, as it should have. I'm not surprised because the uh, planning and zoning amphitheater is very vague, and, and it is clear our residents have all sorts of ideas in their own mind about what an amphitheater means. And so it, it, it invoked this uh wonderful discussion. It went from soup to nuts, like we were gonna have an amphitheater like they had, you know, we're, we're gonna have rock concerts. I mean, it was all over the board. It was really kind of interesting. I was just glad to see what residents are thinking, which is exciting, you know. So um, and, and that's not shocking or, or so, but, you know, all we need to do is come back and say maybe something uh, just uh, in the planning and zoning update, it would be nice to say, you know, there's been a lot of interest in the amphitheater, but we just want to make sure everybody knows that uh, in terms of size and scope, nothing has been decided yet, and your feedback is very much appreciated, you know. Let us know what you're thinking. So um, but that, that they're no way near making a decision. I, I just think an update would be a real simple update would take care of that. And then as far as a shelter, if we want to see uh how warm the room is, why don't we just go around the room right now and see where each council member is on the idea of a shelter for forty thousand dollars or whatever.
Yep, that's exactly what I was gonna recommend, and I'll even go, go in first. I uh, continue to be interested in both projects. I've seen nothing to say that I wouldn't be interested in or willing to spend forty to fifty thousand dollars on a shelter, and I think that the uh, everything I've heard about whatever's going on with this amphitheater is interesting and we should consider, and it's my opinion, we should consider to pursue it. Uh, why don't we just go around the room next with uh Councilperson McNamara?
Well, um, I am fully in favor of pavilions and shelter buildings for the people of our community. Um, that's just uh a service that I think we should offer. Um, with regards to the amphitheater, I have a soft spot for history. That's my first degree before I became a nurse, so I would urge caution with regards to that. Um, and I would urge um historical accuracy in restoration or renovation of the site. That being said, I would not be opposed to a tasteful restoration that is accurate historically, one could say.
There you go. And Councilperson Bruger, are you, there you are.
Yeah, I even have my camera on. Um, yeah, as far as the fieldhouse goes, yes, uh, that was one of the things going way back to when planning and zoning sent out their list of ten or twelve things, including a, you know, a flooding hill, a dog park, what have you, what have you. And asked for our input so they could kind of get an early engagement on, okay, what's council likely to approve and what would we be foolish to put in front of them cuz they've already said we're gonna say no. Um, and the fieldhouse was something I was like, yes, we definitely need that here in this neighborhood. Um, so I'm right on with that. Same with the little amphitheater thing. And then I will point out, cuz I, I generally don't, cuz to be honest, if I'm on Facebook for five minutes a day, it's a heavy day on Facebook for me. I just find almost no use to it anymore. Um, but I did look at it cuz I was like, oh, this is gonna be funny when, you know, a resident was like, an amphitheater, you know, all the problems they had with Polaris, and I just, and I'll say, I'll say in public, I'm sorry, I rolled my eyes. I was like, are you kidding me? Are you somehow thinking we're gonna have a thirty thousand seat outdoor concert venue in the middle of Minerva Park? Um, you know, one of the problems with the internet is people go there to scream into pillows and invent frustrations. I'll say even looking at the comments, I don't believe, I believe our residents are fully aware of what that little amphitheater is cuz most of the comments were either mockingly, I hear we've already booked Metallica for the summer of twenty twenty-three, or you realize this thing is only the size of your living room. I mean, people knew what it was about. Um, and I, I don't wanna, you know, that's why I, I could have mentioned names if I wanted to cuz I didn't pay that much attention to it. I'm not trying to single anyone out or shame them, but it seemed like the majority of the comments on it were like, yeah, this isn't like a big giant thing. Um, but I guess that just goes back to people earlier comments about people finding the information that's there instead of just making assumptions or or whatnot and the dangers of that. Uh, after all of that mindless chatter, I'm also in favor of getting that amphitheater up and going and maybe, you know, having little movie nights there over the summer or a little dad band jamboree on some Friday night in the summer.
Yeah, all right. And Councilperson Benedetti, you are the council person who has not yet opined.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of both the community or the uh, the amphitheater and a, and a shelter. My issue with the shelter is the location of where they're talking about putting it. And uh, you know, like I'd said in the, in the planning zoning meeting is that that particular location, I'd like to see more playground equipment instead of uh putting a, a a shelter there, you know, because we, we do have a limited amount of money, and what I found out in the last meeting is that, you know, we got about a hundred thousand dollars in the parkland fund, and to spend half of that on one shelter, uh, you know, doesn't seem like a good idea. I also like to, you know, I hate to say, go to a different subject, but Mark has brought up a great example of how Facebook is a good tool, and that, you know, granted, you don't, you know, just because someone complains about something on Facebook doesn't mean they have a valid concern, but it is a good place to get an idea of what people think about the amphitheater. And like Mark had just said, you know, it's, you know, by the comments, it seems like most people understand what we're doing and that they're in favor of it. You know, so a lot of people push back about Facebook and that it has no value. Uh, but it does have a value, and I think Mark, you know, pointed it out very well just now, you know. But, you know, back to the original topic, I'm, I'm in favor of both the pavilion and the amphitheater, but I think we need to talk about uh, the location of the pavilion. And that's something I think we should do in the community committee meeting.
I, absolutely. And I, look at you, look at you suggesting something, go to committee, that's.
I'm not opposed to the committee, I'm gonna tell you. I want to point that out every.
All right, then, uh, so just to recap, the temperature of the room is pretty hot for all of it. So look at that.
My caveats.
Yeah.
Yes, with my caveats.
I have, uh, yeah, I, I didn't really give my opinion on the amphitheater.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I just briefly, I'm very sketchy on it. I am worried about the amphitheater. I, I was not in favor of it at first, um, but uh, you know, I want to uh just have an open mind about it, but for me to be in favor of an amph, it would have to be very small and unassuming, and there would have to be, you know, the, 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 the noise thing would have to be noise, especially in the, for some reason, at least in the, where I am in the woods, it's astounding how far noise travels. So um, it would have to be small and unassuming uh for me to be in favor of that. Okay, so I'm done, done.
Well, just for clarity, you're aware of the location that they're talking about and the footprint of the existing structure that they're talking about, right?
I understand the, I understand there's been discussion about um, the, yes, I understand the original footprint.
Right, and as far as I know.
I think, and, and as far as the history goes, there is no, there is no bona fide picture of any amphitheater ever being there. And so uh, I think that uh, people are assuming a history that's not necessarily there.
Well, what do you think that structure is, Diane?
Well, someone has.
You can't deny that it exists, it's there.
We do have an original site map, and, and you know what, I'll, I'll send it around. There is an original site map from the late nineteenth century, which places an amphitheater uh in the, in, in the general location there. Um, you know, it's not a great map, it's not obviously aerial photos or anything, um, but it was done at that time, and there's.
Aerial travel didn't exist when that, when that was.
Understood, understood. So it's, it, it, it's gonna be a site map from the day, um, but I will dig that up and send that around.
There you go. But yeah, I don't believe that there's any consideration to expand the footprint of the structure that's there, simply to rehab it so that it is no longer ruins, but, but potentially operable. And I mean, I guess I'll throw this out there, too. I don't believe there's any, any intention to run power out there.
Well, there, there would need to be some power in the sense, not for speakers, but there's gonna be some lighting. Obviously, if you're gonna have a movie night projector, you're gonna have need, have need to have some one-ten voltage out there. We have, we've discussed.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not, we're not putting a PA system for, for rock concerts, just about.
Not the intent, correct.
Yeah, yeah, so I think.
Definitely electricity, though, cuz as I was playing out, my, my big thing I want to do with them, Huber Ridge does it at the one park they have, there are Strawberry Farms, I think, is, you know, during the summer, they have their family movie night thing, and we could toss that to MPCA, and they could find two or three residents who are willing to wheel their little popcorn makers over and and of course, there are streetlights on the dam, so there is electricity within arm's reach of the area. You know, that we're not running miles of cable, we're running feats of cable.
Right, and we actually, yeah, and, and we've talked to, I believe it was Eric and myself that had talked to a couple of people, uh, or not a couple of people, but we had talked to higher power um when they came out the last time about electricity. I would not, it, it's totally doable and not very expensive.
All right, so there we have, uh, getting back to it, there we have planning and zoning. Eric, did you have any anything you wanted to give a heads up to regarding your planning update?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, definitely just wanna one thing that we're looking at, you know, with, the, the amphitheater's got obviously a few steps to go, but I just wanted to reemphasize for the benefit of council and the public that, that we have, we have good found money from the state uh that will, that'll be from a matching fund, so whatever you, whatever we quote this out as, uh, the state is essentially going to pay for half of it, um, which is good. So always good to take care, take advantage of money from the capital fund when we get it, and we did. Um, on to, schools obviously are, are moving forward. Uh, as everyone can see, the work is being done for the middle school, especially, I think I gave an update on dates the last time. Um, no major issues out there. Um, we did get on them to clean the streets a little more often cuz I was getting tired seeing the mud run out there, and they, they have since hired a street cleaner at their expense to make sure they keep the, the streets clean, and that'll be a continuing operation from this point forward. One large item, uh, not large, but important item for council. As we've discussed in the past, the progress with financial advisors, municipal financial advisors, and our bond attorney, uh, they have wrapped up an engagement letter uh, that was ready late on Friday, so you will get it distributed uh on Monday morning, and so we will have an additional uh, resolution on the agenda concerning that for a first reading for council's review so that you may engage the financial advisor uh, to be able to give you your options moving forward with community building, other large projects, bonding, all that kind of stuff, and that will give council the independent information it needs to make future decisions.
Excellent. All right, and then, move, wrong mouse, moving down the line. Uh, Diane, any, any heads up regarding MPCA stuff?
Uh, that, that, nothing that anyone will find shocking, so um, just the, you know, the usual type of reporting.
Okay, uh, then moving on to committee reports. Uh, Councilperson McNamara, anything uh that you want to give us a heads up about regarding the community?
Um, yeah, so I had originally wanted to, I mean, nothing new besides what we just discussed for planning the meeting for the nineteenth, that's, I was going to bring it up at this time.
I'm sorry, I zoned out there for a second. Can you say that again?
I was going to bring up the meeting that we have going on the nineteenth at this time. I have been in touch with those people. Uh, that has not fallen by the wayside in case any of our famous Farview Four are listening, you've not been forgotten about, and come on down on the nineteenth.
Got it. Okay, uh, then next up is uh, me for finance. Uh, in truth, uh, finance committee did not actually get a meeting together last month. Um, I don't know that anything has actually changed in, in that we are pursuing uh uh, the, uh, to the financing against future TIF revenues, and a part of that is relates back to what Erica just reported on, getting the agreement with the financial advisor so that we can continue to pursue that. Uh, Councilperson Curl isn't here to report for streets. So Councilperson Shrimp, anything you wanted to give us a heads up on regarding communications before the report on the month, on, at the meeting on Tuesday?
Uh, no, I um I, I, I am, I, I haven't, I'm on my cell phone right now cuz I'm, I'm away from so, but, so I can't look at it really quickly here, but was it decided to have this community forum?
It's my under, oh, okay, I think we kind of went in circles. I'm gonna answer this. Um, what I got from the email chain was we are gonna do something on Tuesday, then nineteenth, we're gonna get a topic or whatever date that is. I think it's nineteen, um, that we are going to do something, and I took it as we were doing forum. Um, we were doing the public notices, so that's the way I took it, and we were gonna discuss what we were gonna do as a discussion topic. Um, but if somebody wants to change it back to an actual work session, if they feel that we didn't get enough done, or if there's a topic they want to um, go and, obviously, I can change the thing. I took it upon myself cuz from the emails, I was thinking it was community forum, but you guys were going to discuss what you were going to discuss with the community, or just let them, you know, I, I, I know that it's nice to have a topic, but um, or we just do a open, let people come in and ask questions and all of that.
Yeah, I will throw out there that my, my, my plans for that day have changed, and I'm gonna be traveling to Denver for family reasons. So whatever's going on that night, I won't be there.
The nineteenth is the meeting for the community.
Right.
Right.
Right, and then we were supposed to go directly into at seven o'clock, the either work session or community forum.
Okay, we could do a community, I'd, I'd be in favor of the community forum. Things would kind of spill over if they had to. Gives a little more wiggle room.
Me too.
Yeah, and, and it's up to you guys if you guys want to put together a topic. I think that's what Diane, if, if I'm hearing Diane, right, I think that's what she's looking for. Do we want to advertise it on Facebook as a topic?
Well, yeah, uh, also, um, we did, we haven't advertised this, this forum was not, has not been advertised in the newsletter because we didn't really decide on it in time, so the only um advertising will be uh Facebook and and my signs, I'll say, this, the four signs that I did do for the last one, I'll say Monday. So um, yeah, you guys, uh, yeah, so um, uh it sounds like, you know, we, um, we want to have a forum to have a forum, I, I just, um.
Well, now that you mention it. Right, I think now that you mention it, Diane, it's not a, probably not a very productive uh, forum meeting, it's, no one knows about it.
So we can change it to a work session if you guys have something to talk about, or we can just cancel it and start planning for the November um, community forum and do it in November, the meeting, uh, I don't think that's gonna work because, well, that's gonna be up to you guys to pick a date. Um, because if I remember correctly, mon, um, November's meetings, there's two back-to-back because of Thanksgiving.
Maybe we could do a community forum with the candidates.
Hosting one online.
Yeah, there's been.
We're, we're not, we're not. M, MPCA is, uh, if that happens, it'll be MPCA. It was in the newsletter, so.
Yes.
Supposed to be doing a Zoom-based or um
It's like next.
Uh, yeah, it's, right. It's the eight, it's the eighteenth, I believe, at like six PM on Zoom.
Which I don't think is gonna get a whole, I mean, how many, I know, it's, I struggle, I, well, if the one for my son, I'd never figure out how to get a Zoom meeting going. You know, you know, so. You know, you know, so.
And then with that many people on there.
Okay, so, so here's the thing, you, you don't have to, okay, so you don't have to. I, I tested this because Monica suggested it and I tested it and it does work, so. That, but it only works for, for people who, who are on Facebook, because you got to go to Facebook. So we're going to be posting on Facebook the Zoom link. And if you post the link right on the Facebook page, a person can click from Facebook and get right into Zoom. Without having to enter anything or do anything, all they have to do is click on the link, so. That is, uh, Monica's idea, so that's how we're moving forward on that and that won't catch everybody, but. Um, I'm hoping that everyone agrees to have this thing recorded so that it can then be. Uh, uh, posted, uh, for later viewing.
I would agree.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah. Guess what? It is what it is.
Yeah.
That's, that was, that's what their options are and that's what they're going to do and it's, if people want to reach out, they can do that, um. That's what they're offering.
They can post a video on Facebook.
There you go.
It just misses the people that aren't on Facebook because, uh, you do learn how many people really aren't on Facebook, have no interest and they come in, uh, there's several. And, and it just so happens they're all on Maplewood and Alder Vista, which I think is funny. Um, but yeah, uh, there's a lot of people on Alder Vista and Maplewood that stop in and ask questions and do all of that and I'm always like. Usually they come in and ask about the food trucks, um, I can't find my newsletter and I'm trying to figure out when the news and I'm like, well, it's on the website, oh, we don't use the internet. Um, and so, yeah, I mean. Not everybody does, we forget those people.
But there are good people who don't do the internet, so.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so I, it's, it's unfortunate, I would have, um, I would have liked to have. Uh, it just didn't, you know, with the block party and the other stuff, um, the, the garage sales and all this stuff that was going on. M P C A really didn't have time to focus on this in time to get it, it, you know. But I, I do, I was, I was suggesting that Monica, uh. I was suggesting that the candidates could come into the community center and Zoom from there. And that, that any residents who don't have, that could actually come to the communities and watch in person, there would be a. Uh, a body limit, if that should never be an issue, but, uh, you know, but, that, that could happen, but, um. I'm not sure that, again, it's the timing, we could, um, put up some signs. Uh, if that were the case and have, um, but I don't know if I can, uh, I don't know if we can get the candidates to come to the community building.
So Diane, and, and I'll, I'll say to this, and I know Monica's probably not going to see this, but. Um, if you want to communicate this or that, whatever we need to do to help assist without stepping on things that we shouldn't be stepping on. I am more than open, willing, setting it up, helping set up for whatever we would need to do. Um, so keep me posted and let me know if that is something or Monica can, can reach out to me and let me know. Um, but I will make sure that they have access to anything that they need, um, in order to make that happen if they decide they want to do that.
Okay, all right, thanks, thanks, Mary.
And as far as, uh, toe stepping or stepping on things we shouldn't, I, I'm of the opinion that as long as all we're doing is providing easier access. Or availability for all candidates at the same time, I don't think we should run into any sort of, well, you're, you're supporting this, no, it's, it's all of them. And if one of them doesn't make it, but they are offered the opportunity, then we're not discriminating against them because. They were given the same opportunity as everyone.
Yeah, isn't, isn't there one gentleman who's like? Wife is about to give birth, uh, like.
That, oh, that just happened, you go, you have to go on Facebook, David, because he's.
He's doing what with his new, that's.
Yeah, I wondered if that's going to get removed.
He, he did a political, uh, uh, advert, announcement with the baby in his arms, that he was running and la, 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 what his platform is. Uh, with his new baby, so obviously he's had his new baby.
Yep.
That's, I don't, I don't find that particularly, what, you know what, I'm not, I'm not competing against anybody.
We shouldn't, uh, we shouldn't opine on our opinions on, on candidates at this time.
But I've seen lots of political ads where smiling kids were involved.
That is true too.
Yes.
All right, moving forward, uh, let's see safety, any update from safety?
Nothing.
All right, then moving onward. Next up is legislation, Councilperson Burger.
All right, we have two things on the agenda, um, one is the leaf pickup. Um, it's going to be a third reading, I'm going to move for passage, it is with. Oh, let me scroll down and get the name, um.
Groundskeeper or?
Yeah, Master Landscaping, these are the people who did some lake. Excuse me. Some, uh, lake removal last year, lake tree removal. Um, that's the only experience we have with them thus far, but it was a positive experience. Um, they also came in about forty five hundred dollars below the other. Company, which is kind of, but not exactly the company we've used in the past, as has been mentioned. Uh, it's the same company name, but it's under new, new ownership, new management, so that's why I would say it's kind of the same company, but. You don't know because it's under a new person. Um, we did have a, a streets committee meeting to discuss this on Wednesday, was Thursday, went Thursday. Unfortunately, due to lack of attendance, that meeting was canceled. So does anyone, I, I hate to do this, but does anyone have anything they want to say about this now before I move to, uh. Pass it on Tuesday night? Okay, good.
But.
The other one, and you know, feel free to look at it, and I don't know, Mayor Hughes, if you want to comment on this at all or not. Uh, thirteen twenty twenty one is finally, it looks like in its final form. These are the budget reconciliation adjustments, however you want to say it, the. We thought we were going to spend this much and we didn't spend that much, or we're going to claw some money back, or. We thought we were only going to spend this much and it ended up costing us more, so we need to push some more money into it. Um, as I understand this, this is some, this is, this is a yearly thing, this is an ongoing. You make your budget, you try to stick to it and things change because you can't predict the future.
So you hit it on the head, we're in October, so we made it further than we probably usually do. Um, this is your adjustments at the end of the year, um, as you can see, there were a lot that went down, there were some that went up. One of the large ones that went up was the East Shore Court project, the thirty thousand dollars, um, if you note that on there. Um, that's to get the money that we talked about at the meeting that we were going to pass, you know, I advised that we were passing something, but the money has not actually been transferred. That we haven't done the supplemental appropriation for that thirty thousand, we did have a lot of money in the, um, as you can see, there was already quite a bit of money in there. So she had to increase that by thirty thousand, um, some of the things in the police department, as you may or may not be aware. Um, uniforms, that budget, uh, that's one of the increases, um, we. Will be outfitting five officers this year, um, five new officers this year from January basically till. The end of this year, so that is obviously deflated. Um, I believe part of the police also was training, um. Obviously didn't do too much in training in twenty twenty, most of that got pushed to twenty twenty one, so I believe the training budget has ended. But there were still some trainings that they wanted to do for this year. Um, so it was, i- it's, it's exactly, I probably could keep going on, I don't even have it in front of me, I just know that that's some of the things that. Um, we had on there, I know she made a note or, or two on, um, the fire EMS. That is, that was not due to a contract increase or anything like that, but we are still dealing with. Um, the closeout when we sold the fire truck and there were some different things that, um. We are still getting money from Med account, so there were some adjustments that needed to be done because we're still getting money in, still getting money. Out, that's not just the fire contract. Um, she noted in there that that should dwindle down over the next year or two, that we won't see anything, but. Um, those are still some adjustments that needed done for the closeout of EMS for twenty twenty one. So that's.
When you're talking about police, the training is probably underneath the contractual services that we increased to twelve hun- increased by twelve hundred, not to twelve hundred.
Yeah, there's.
Uniforms are the five thousand dollar that put in the supplies and material.
Supplies and material, that could be for police, I, I, I know that there's quite a bit for police, um. You, I know uniforms was one of the big things that we discussed and I can get more specific if we need to from, if anybody has any questions, but. It, it's pretty much the basic things that, here's what I will say, there's no contract, there's no anything, there's nothing big that we're trying to. Um, there's no like, oh my gosh, this is for this, no, it's, it's the, it's mostly the adjustments that need to be done before the end of the year. Um, because we're running out of money in some of the funds and there was money left over in some of them, so why not get it out there?
That's legislation, uh, or at least my, uh, talky bit of legislation done. And it looks like we're having at least one question coming in, so Tony, I'll yield that for to you.
I was just asking if the, uh, the, these numbers are in the packet that went out recently, okay.
Yeah. I know.
Page and a half of pretty laid out, I mean, mind you, you kind of have to guess when you look at the. Reference code and name, you know, oh, materials, oh, okay, that's where the uniforms obviously are or what have you.
So, um, there is going to potentially be something coming, um, with more appropriations. That may not make it to this, there may, there could potentially be another update or two that they were working on, and I don't know exactly what it was, I'd be lying. Um, but we were trying to make sure that we got all of them in, so we wouldn't have to do another one, but I would not be surprised if you see something, um, come through because there's. Something that.
Something else came up.
Feel like it had to do with O P W C that she was talking about, a payment that had to be made, blah, 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 whatever. Um, there'll be, you know, if, if there's another one, you'll know what it's for, but if we can get it on this one, there might be another adjustment on Monday, which is. Which I love not having a meeting until Tuesday, just so I can throw it in there, because it's nice to be able to adjust the stuff on Monday and give you guys advance notice versus. Hey, by the way, Monday, we just got this and it's now in your new packet that you never even saw, so Tuesdays, just so you know, I kind of like it.
All right, so, uh, that is the end of the, well, I guess we should. Any, anybody have any other old business other than what we already hashed out, uh, in the first, uh, hour and fifteen of this meeting that they want to bring up at this time? Anybody have any new business for council that they would like to bring up at this time?
I, I would just like to, uh, put in a plug for having a, getting a finance, uh. Meeting set up for the appropriate time, I know it's getting on budget time for next year. And, um, I think, of course, we need Kim to be ready to, um, present what she has, but I. Just wanted to make sure that we're, it seems to take a while to get these meetings set up, so I just wanted to bring this up.
And just FYI, we're meeting on, on, sorry, I think Brian, I didn't mean to cut you off.
You're fine.
But I do have an update on that, we are actually doing our admin, um, budget discussion this week. So, um, it'll obviously need to be after that, so, and when I say this week, I think it's Tuesday, but don't quote me on that, so. Um, at, we will be working with Kim on whatever day it is this week, um, and we'll be going over the things, the ones, the needs, though, whatever. And then, um, so if anybody has something that, you know, they want me to bring up in that, just let me know. But at this point, it just needs to be after, after that, give her a couple of days after that, so at least, um, after probably the twentieth of October.
Okay, well, I.
As you know, we need, we need three readings on this and.
Right, the, the plan is we have the two meetings in November and then the one in December. So that, we'll have it by the end of, we'll have it presented to you guys by November, the first meeting in November, so you are correct.
So you'll have it for the work session, any, and also in terms of.
Yeah.
That's the goal. Yeah, the, the first reading, it would be in the, it, the goal would be, it would be in the work session, because we would be talking about it on that first Monday of November.
So can, can you work with, uh, Kim to see what her availability is like that last week of October?
Absolutely.
The Finance Committee can meet and discuss it before it comes to council in that packet.
Absolutely. I'm doing it now, I'm not ignoring you guys, but if I don't.
Yeah, I know, I know, and I don't, we don't need to get it scheduled right now, but good to send it now so that it doesn't get burnt shiny.
Got it, you guys.
All right. Any, uh, so that was the one new business to ensure that we have a proper view on. Budget, the process, yes, Tony, I saw, I saw a finger and it was a polite one.
An index finger.
And I was glad for it, yes.
I think we need to, uh, I don't know, talk about or this, or decide if we want to make any changes to the rules of council. You know, because despite what you had said, uh, I do get to vote one more time on the rules of council.
Yeah, well, uh, we can, uh, why don't we handle this, okay, I'll, I'll ask the question. Do we want to set a, a work session just for rules of council? Or do we want to have the expectation that everybody come to next month's Saturday work session? With whatever proposed changes to the existing rules of council that they would like?
I, I think that's a good idea, just.
So then everybody be aware that the expectation is that next, next month, the October Sat- or not, not Co- pardon me, the November. Saturday work session, we will, uh, address and entertain any proposed changes to rules of council. For those that are not aware of our rules of council, they are on the website, uh, so you can download them, peruse them, redline them. And come with constructive thoughts. All right, anything else?
Yeah, I just actually want to say thank you for everybody for, um, being on their best behavior today, oh my goodness, I think everybody gets A plus. Tony, you get an A plus today.
Gold star.
You didn't yell at me one time.
That's right, look at that, everybody's.
Save it for Monday night.
No, 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 let it, let him save it for Monday, because we aren't going to save it until Tuesday, right? That's right, give one grind all out Monday and it'll be pleasant as pie come Tuesday.
I'd show up Monday and then come back on Tuesday.
Okay, that's.
But you have already gotten all the young now, we're good. All right, with that, I think I'm calling this done, everybody have a super duper day, Mayor Hughes, enjoy your football. And, uh, yeah, be well.
Have fun, guys.
Take care.
All right, thank you, thank you so much, I'll talk to you guys tomorrow or Tuesday.
Have a good weekend.